This is the February 10th meeting of City Council is called to order. Our clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Gouwith.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gregory.
Yeah.
Councilmember Waring.
Yeah.
Councilmember Seekings.
Here.
Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Regal.
Here.
Councilmember Moody.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Riley.
Here. And I call on Councilmember Gary White to open our meeting with an invocation and then lead us in the flag of allegiance to the flag.
I'm so frank. Lord, as we gather here today as colleagues and friends, please give us the ability to provide the leadership with citizens of Charleston and fully engage our responsibilities as community leaders in these challenging times. Please provide us with your blessing, patience, intellect, eloquence, perseverance. We must seek patience of each other and we must strive to learn and grow, order to make a difference in our city. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic which sustains, founded under our individual, whose liberty and justice for all. Well, it's a pleasure to welcome all of you to this meeting of City Council and we will begin by honoring a very wonderful citizen and community servant. And I'd like to ask Louise Maybank if she would join me up here.
Do you want me to sit?
No, no, just stand there, no. Well, I'm going to, I forget that out of the way. I'm going to read the proclamation first because my comments would likely then be repeated in the proclamation. Then I would like to say a few words. West Louise J. Maybank will be recognized on February the 10th, 2015, by friends and family on the occasion of her many years of dedicated service to the Charleston County Green Belt Advisory Board and the Charleston community. And West Louise has dedicated her life to this community and has demonstrated in many practical ways her deep and genuine love for the city and surrounding area. West Louise served 10 years as Chair of the Charleston County Green Belt Advisory Board, a 14-member citizen advisory board initially tasked with crafting the Charleston County Comprehensive Green Belt Plan, which serves to evaluate the Green Belt program and makes policy recommendations to county council. West Louise led the Green Belt Advisory Board in gathering extensive input from the citizens on how they wished the Green Belt portion of the Charleston County Transportation Sales Tax was to be spent after the board worked for a year crafting the comprehensive plan. And whereas during Louise's tenure on the Green Belt Advisory Board, the Green Belt Program has issued $94 million for the protection of 20,530 acres, which have been protected for parks and green space. Of the total funds awarded, over 80 percent was used to purchase more than 8,000 acres that will be opened to the public as urban and rural parks. And the Green Belt Plan was awarded the South Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association's 2006 Award for Outstanding Planning Project in Large Jurisdiction. And West Louise's service has no limit, as she has served on the City of Charleston Board of Planning and Zoning, Board of Zoning Adjustment, and the Tourism Management Commission, where she served as Chair for several years. She also served on the Committee of Citizens that designated the design the first tourism ordinance in the country. And West Louise is the founding board member of the Low Country Open Land Trust and served as its chairman. The Low Country Open Land Trust has grown from an idea into an organization that has permanently protected 40,000 acres of land in the Low Country. And West Louise also served on the Star Charleston Foundation, the Coastal Community Foundation, and the Junior League of Charleston Trusting, the Charleston Day School, and Episcopal High School. And West Louise served as Director of the Bank of South Carolina from 1986 till 2014 and a member of the Board of Directors of the Bank of South Carolina Corporation from 1995 to April 2014. Whereas Louise was born in Edgcombe County, North Carolina, and has lived in the City of Charleston for approximately many years.
I don't care.
She has been married to David Maybank for many years, and they are blessed with three sons, three grandsons, and one granddaughter. Now therefore, Joseph P. Riley, Jr., Mayor of the City of Charleston, hereby proclaim February 10th, 2015, as Louise J. Maybank Day and extend sincere congratulations for the many years of dedicated service to Charleston County Green Belt Advisory Board, the Charleston community, and extend my very best wishes for many more successful, happy years ahead. Louise, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. I'm honored to hear that. Let me just add that the, you know, the transportation tax was heavily discussed, debated, and passed in a referendum, and then the community hoped for and deserved the Green Belt Program to be attended with integrity and thoughtfulness and care. And Louise led a wonderful board that did exactly that. And, you know, these things are forever. You know, forever, those thousands of acres of land protected, the thousands of acres of land that the public will have, those lands that the public will always own, those are, those forever will be defining and enhancing the Charleston and the Low Country experience. The every decision attending to the expenditure of the public's money was done with care and thoughtfulness and, as I said, with integrity. And it is my hope that eventually the community will consider extending that revenue source, or maybe even expanding upon it. And when they have the decision before them whether or not to do that, the success of the Charleston Green Belt Initiative and, as I said, the thoroughness and honesty and integrity that guided it will help the next effort. I know have a great chance of being successful. So Louise, it's an amazing gift that you've given our community and it's a, thank you and congratulate you and wonderful to be able to publicly recognize you for your wonderful service in this and the many other initiatives that have been mentioned. Thank you very much. Thank you. May I be out there?
You bet. Get down.
Thank all of you for the very, very gracious comments from the City Council. It has been my extreme pleasure to serve this city and this county for these many, many years. And the overarching goal of the Green Belt Advisory Board has been for the betterment of the community as a whole. That is what we were about, and I hope that is what we have achieved. In order to do that, we had to have the assistance of groups, both private and public, to guide us along the way and to help us keep our focus. And so it was not just the Green Belt Advisory Board, it was the greater community also. As it was said in these comments, I did grow up in a very small rural community. And in that community, the natural elements impacted the circumstances of every single citizen. And therefore, I've known, I've had a lifelong understanding of the importance of the world around citizens and how they need to, citizens need to feel comfortable in their settings and proud of their settings. And I moved from there to Charleston 56 years ago. I'll be honest about it. And I've been here ever since. And in both settings, both the urban and the rural settings, the goal of protecting the integrity of the characteristics of the special places where people live is an essential goal for a very healthy community. And I am very pleased to have been able to do what I've been able to do thus far for the community, the greater community, both the county and the city. And a very special thanks goes to Mayor Riley for his support of the city, and especially to Laurie Thompson, who's in the back, who sat beside me from the very beginning of the planning throughout every single meeting. And as I've already said to Laurie, he was the person that steered me away from trouble and stood by my side in the troubled waters, and there were some, and there were some. So to you, Laurie, is a very, very special thank you. And I would also like to say to you all, I would like to close with what I said to the county, because I feel this so strongly, and in essence, it's a challenge. But this is a quote from Winston Churchill, that he said to the British people after a victory in the early part of World War II, when they were thinking maybe that it was all over. And Winston, Mr. Churchill says to his subjects, he says, "Now, this is not the end. It is not even the beginning of the end, but maybe it's the end of the beginning." So let's hope that this is the end of the beginning of protecting very special places, urban and rural, for the citizens of Charleston County. And thank you again.
Yes, Louise.
Thank you.
I got it. Thank you. Thank you, Vanessa.
You're welcome.
And now I'm pleased to recognize Robert Jenkins, who would like to make a presentation.
Yes, Mayor Riley, this will be his last year. I will not have the opportunity to interview or be with George Washington or any of the historical people, but I'm glad to be here with Mayor Riley. He allowed me to sit in his office and make a video. Wanted to thank Jennifer and Maybank, Vanessa Maybank, for helping me out. Celebrities are not in the movies, they're not in Hollywood. Celebrities are your neighbors, your friends, the people who make you feel special. Mayor Riley is in the business of making people feel special, as you just saw with the first presentation. So I made a little commemorative video for Mayor Riley, and I hope you all enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Riley.
Well, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Dear Mayor Riley, I'd like to call you calm in the eye of the Hurricane Joe Riley. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to exercise my freedom of speech and peace. I love speaking at City Council, placing myself in the historical records of the City of Charleston. Thank you for this excellent forum. Thank you for the awesome letter that you wrote to my mother, Carolyn Politezum, for her service on the Charleston County School Board. Your very eloquent letter thanking her for her service still makes her feel very special to this day. And I've learned that love is not what you give to the people that you admire, you give love to the people who make you feel special, Mayor Riley. So I thank you for making me and my mother feel special. And I have seen your kindness extended to others during more trying situations. Hurricanes are known for having an eye in the storm. The eye is calm in the center of chaos. You, Mayor Riley, exhibit the same calmness in your personality. I'd like to call you calm in the eye of the Hurricane Joe Riley. Mayor Riley, you are calm in the eye of criticism, calm in the eye of adulation, and on September 21st, 1989, you were calm when Hurricane Hugo had his eye on Charleston, South Carolina. Calmly, you called your staff together, you told them to call the cities in the Gulf to find out how they handled the meal. And not only are you calm in the eye of the hurricane, you're also very decisive. You found out that quickly rising water is a killer. You wanted something out of the citizens, but you didn't want fear, you didn't want panic. I think you were an action. The evacuation had begun, calm in the eye of the Hurricane Joe Riley, you were. You and your staff boarded up City Hall with the local and national media present to show the people of Charleston a good example. Hurricane Joe Riley, you knew that it was going to be serious. You knew that it was an opportunity to serve the citizens. You told your staff that this is the time that the citizens will need us the most. You calmly told your team, "We have got to do better than any other city has ever done." This is with no roof on City Hall. Always calm, Joe Riley, you started calling plays like a quarterback or a general in battle. You wanted normalcy back. You would not allow them to quit. Even though you all were exhausted, you would not allow your team to let up. After the hurricane, you called the Conference of Mayors, and they, you know, got back to you wanting to know how to help. In the end, you know, information, you helped build Charleston into a world-class city. I understand why, in a sense, you are the most loved politician in America. I do not want you to retire. I want you to take a little time off with your family and friends, then I pray that you use all your superpowers to help the homeless and the poor. I know that your, how your leadership helped the region before, during, and after Hurricane Hugo. So I'm asking you, please don't retire. The homeless are experiencing an economic hurricane right now, and they need the calm, decisive leadership that only Mayor Riley can provide. Help calm the current economic storm that our city is being challenged with. The poor, the homeless have to lead the view. So Mayor Riley, I know whatever you decide to do, that you, the best years of your life are still ahead of you.
Well, I'm so honored. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Riley.
Thank you.
All right. What do you want to say?
That was so nice.
Thank you. Thank you. It was definitely, thank you. It was definitely.
Thank you. That was so nice of you, guys. Thank you. Really nice of you. Thank you. Well, that was so kind of you, Mr. Jenkins, and thank you for that and certainly for, obviously, your very hard work in putting that together.
Thank you.
Yeah, it sure was. Yeah, it was. Thank you, sir.
Sir, thank you.
We now proceed with the approval of City Council minutes.
Correct.
Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, the ayes have it. Next is citizen participation period, which is an opportunity for citizens to address City Council on any matter they wish. Would anyone like to be heard? There are no other public hearings, so this would be the opportunity to speak. Yes, sir.
Like I'm on tour, it was great being at the school board meeting the other morning. Anthony G. Bryant, Bryant Group, Inc., P.O. Box 20573, South Carolina 29413. My friend, Senator Tim Scott, spoke to the Office of National Affairs on my behalf, May 8, 2013, and Tim was the first person on my father's ill in 2002. I told him I was going to leave the board as only appeals since my mother during that period of time. And so to get these documents in '09, I went to court, received this ticket, 2000, in Broad Street. I filed a complaint, sent a fax out, my fax machine in Berkeley County, to DC regarding Administrative Procedure Act violation, 1946. We filed a 1978, it's a general complaint for rational action against the appropriate authorities regarding this matter. And so we looked at all these programs and activities from the Department of Justice, Interior, Rassan Ali Education, and also Transportation. And all these letters were investigatory, right, nationally, very disappointing. Received a ticket in 1989, again, and that was City of Charleston did not make that stop in 1989. It was not made by the City of Charleston, or the County of Charleston, it was made by a state trooper. And so therefore, that's 24 years of an inquiry upon someone's person and business. And therefore, that's criminal discovery abuse cited in North Carolina, in which I filed a complaint against Bank of America in 2007 regarding inappropriate underwriting prior to 2008 mortgage debacle. I just filed a federal, I did a public comment to the Federal Reserve. To the Federal Reserve, I filed a public comment and submitted all these documents for the record to the Federal Reserve regarding the future. And so this is also the Ray Cooper, who, this is about the Department of Insurance, that we went to the Citadel and spoke publicly, was the only person to make public comment to the Insurance Commission, and I'd not received yet back the minutes of that. Last on the agenda is Governor Healy did not respond back to that. And under Administrative Procedure Act of 1946, whoever's involved with this free jack violation in South Carolina, reason for, Atlanta, will be hearing from myself again and reseemby all my complaints over again. And so again, thank you for your service and your time to the state, and all the best.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor Riley, for the opportunity to exercise my freedom of speech. It would be very disingenuous if I didn't say that I have ulterior motive with the video, is that I'm interested in helping the poor and the homeless in Charleston. That is a very complex subject. And if you talk and you bring that subject up to 100 different people, you will find 100 different opinions on it. You may not, we may not feel sympathy for the homeless, but Hurricane Hugo did not discriminate. There were people who had homes, and by the time Hurricane Hugo came to Charleston, some of those people were homeless, and it was through no fault of their own. So everybody was in the sound of my voice, please search your heart and find out what kind of resources that we have to help our neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Robert Ballard, Radcliffe Borough Neighborhood Association. I see that livability receives some pleasant press in the morning paper, and we, neighborhoods do support the livability. This one court was begun 12 years ago, thanks to Mayor Riley and our good friend, the judge, Michael Maloney. We, all the historic districts downtown and all those, on all sides of this city, want to see livability completely upgraded. And our last livability step of improvement is going to be the creation of the landlord business license. We've been working on this for going on a decade. Michael Maloney is the voice that guides us, and this is nothing terribly complicated. A landlord business license is in place on Isle of Poms, Mount Pleasant, North Charleston, County of Charleston. Your best model right now is probably the City of Clemson, and they work hand and glove with Clemson University. It works like a charm. We have a ownership pattern in this town where we've got to make sure that tenants are protected. When they enter a contract with a landlord, the landlord needs to make sure that he agrees to look after all tenants. Your ownership, for instance, downtown is 65 percent homeowner occupied. South of Broad drops to 57. In Harson Village, it goes down to 41. In Radcliffe Borough, in Little Old Cannon Borough, it's down to 27 percent homeowner occupied. So we have to protect all tenants, and we have to protect all those who are homeowner occupied that have been trying to protect our city for going on 40 years. It's a simple procedure, and if folks are concerned about doing it all at one time, I would suggest that we could tackle this the same way we did with recycling. Just start with a trial center. If the folks downtown want to serve as a checkpoint, we can initiate it just as we did with street sweeps. And once it's successful, then West Ashley and James Island and everybody else is going to want to play, because it keeps up your land area and it protects livability. I would simply ask that we give this, give this a try in the next six months. It's something that we can work out. If we need consultation, we can call Clemson or any of the other townships. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Council, Mohammed Idris. This month is African-American History Month. We have the name, and the City of Charleston got the wealth. I had something else to say, but when I seen that video, it touched me because that's what brought me down here. The name Hurricane. It was telling Ken to hurry. And the name was Hugo, and hu meaning color, and the color must go. It shouldn't be no black and white, it should be human beings. This month, and the example that we see of black history, is what we see, saw the 1st of February in the Seattle, New England game. Everyone knew Seattle had won that game. Everyone knew that Seattle had won that game, but when they looked up, New England got it. And that's the same thing, but this month for us, Mayor Riley takes the credit and we do the work. That's a shame before God. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
I saw the paper today, and Mr. Ballard's photograph was in the paper, and all of a sudden, my sister says, "Alice, they have a bomb scare." And I said, "I better call the police because I think it's Mr. Ballard fussing about all the garbage and all the stuff on the road." And I know Mr. Ballard, I like the way you speak, okay? So I have another problem that I always have a problem, so I'm just going to say it. I was coming here, and I turned around Grove Street, King Street, and we have a new building going up that's going to be a restaurant. And something bothers me. Why do we have to put a building about this far into the sidewalk, and then the street is here? We need to do something about that. We need to have more sidewalks and wider, because people are going to get hurt. I hope not, and I hope I'm wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Hearing none. Next, we have petitions communications, and first is a reappointment of members of the Charleston Housing Authority. Any discussion? And I might say that Chairman Williams has been ill, and we certainly have him in our thoughts and prayers. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those who know, the ayes have it. Next is the Sustainability Committee members, which, you know, the ordinance requires that we alternate terms. And I would like to ask if Councilmember Seekings would agree to chair the committee during this term, and thank Councilmember Gregory for his service as chair.
We do agree, Mayor Riley.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those who know, the ayes have it. Council, City Council Committee reports, Traffic and Transportation Committee. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We only have one item here, the seven-star taxi. It was approved by the committee, so I'll make a motion that we approve their license.
Any discussion? I'd like to thank, I thanked the chair before the meeting, but... I'd like to thank, I thanked the chair before the meeting, but I'd like to thank the chair and the committee members and Janie Borden and our staff for their, and the staff of the Traffic and Transportation Department on the work that they're putting into the transportation network company matter. It's, I don't know, I bet there isn't a city that's worked harder than our city and through the Traffic and Transportation Committee to come up with a wise way to regulate and recognize this new transportation endeavor. So I thank, thank you all for that. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman?
I was just going to add to that, and I want to say thanks also. The committee members have been very diligent. Chief Mullin, Sergeant King with the Police Department, Janie Borden has just gone above and beyond to get us where we need to be. Robbie Somerville has been in there.
Yes, sir.
So it really has been a great effort. And the people involved, I think the taxis, the limos and the NTC companies have given us some valuable input.
Yes, sir.
So hopefully we'll have, have something. And that was really my comment here is, we're going to have another meeting. We're down to two items that we've got to discuss. We'll have another meeting on the 19th, I think it's Thursday, the 19th of February. Hopefully, we'll wrap it up. At that point, Janie can come back and give us an ordinance that we can send out and start the process through the reading. So it's on here, but we're, we're getting close.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Committee on Public Works and Utilities. Mr. Chair?
Second.
Item B has been deferred.
That's right.
Yes, so you'd be voting on item A.
Okay.
Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Committee on Ways and Means.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Next, we have bills up for second reading.
Second. Okay, one through five.
Well, we have seven bills, which are we just going to do one through five right now? It's one through seven.
Eight and nine are deferred.
So it's one through seven up for second reading. No, then you don't have the amended.
You have the amended copy.
Cannot be amended. Okay.
Second. I second that.
Motion is that we give the first seven ordinances second reading and order the third reading. Motion is made, a second and discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Question is, should the bill be given third reading, their name changed to build a ordinance and grows to ratification? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. And without objection, they are ratified. Next, we have bills up for first reading and one through three. Is there any motion on those? Yes, sir. Councilmember Wagner.
One and two are, that changes. I'm just trying to figure out what changed. Why, I mean, this is something we talked about, what, about 10 months ago, eight months ago, and it's right in the middle, comes out round back of my platform division. I was for it then. I'm just trying to figure out what changed.
Sure. Well, that's a good question.
In terms of the actual map and what changed from the previous map that was included in the agenda to this one, I'm not sure what the change is. I'll have to find out if you'd like to defer it.
Let's defer until we figure it out. I mean, I wrote it, I wrote it before, I wrote it afterwards, I wrote it this week and I can't figure it out.
Thank you for your care. So that would be on all three?
One and two.
One and two.
One and two. Okay. All righty. So we'll, without objection, we'll defer L. 1 and 2. And then we've got three, which is ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance so that property on Main Road be zoned general business.
I'm not sure where it is. I think I know where it is. I don't see a problem with it.
Okay. Tim?
The motion is to defer one and two.
Give it first reading.
And give first reading to one, to number three. Correct?
Number three. Yes, sir.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. That brings down to the matter of Miss Lady's business. Yes, sir. Councilmember Lewis.
There's a lot of speculation out there, talk about me running for sixth term.
Yes, sir.
So I just want members of the city council to know I am going to run.
All right.
I am, I am running for ninth term. So if y'all hear anything else, it's lies. I'll be running, okay? Thank you. So y'all will know.
Come on.
Well, thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Councilmember Moody.
I was just curious on that, on that L. 1 and 2 that we, we just marked them as deferred. I don't know, you know, I'm going to defer to Councilmember Wagner, but is there something that might be held up here that we're not aware of, that if we should give it first reading, we still got a chance to answer this thing down the road? So that's all I was going to make that point.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's very thoughtful.
If that's not going to be a problem, then we'll, we'll just leave it deferred. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business to come towards the meeting of city council? If not, we stand adjourned.